All right, good evening everyone and welcome to the Bennington Select Board Meeting. Today is Monday, May 12th. We are at the Bennington Fire Facility on River Street in the multipurpose room on the third floor. My name is Tom Haley. I have the honor of chairing this board and I will at this time ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves, starting with Nancy.
Hi, I'm Nancy White.
Jim Sullivan.
Jackie Metz.
Clark Adams.
Ahmed Woods. Oh, Ahmed Woods, and I'm told that I have no mute button tonight, so let's just leave that as it stands. Thank you.
All right, also with us is Nancy Lively, who as always takes excellent minutes. We have Stu Hurd, who is our Town Manager, and Josh Boucher, representing us from Cat TV, who will make sure our new cameras work better than the old ones, or so he hopes, he says. We'll begin as always with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ed, could you join us?
I can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And Jackie, could I ask you to read our vision statement to remind us of what we aspire to in our work?
Sure. Vision statement: Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the Consent Agenda, which consists of the minutes of April 28th, the warrants and the licenses. For purpose of discussion, could I have a motion to accept?
So moved. So moved.
Jackie, in a second?
All seconded up.
Okay, Clark, thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Ed?
I have just a couple of questions on the warrants. So I'm on page four, the payment for Grind Line. Stu, can you just give this board some update or refresher on the payment process for the skate park construction?
Yeah, these would be for services rendered over the last, potentially, a month or two, depending on what the services are. Those go through approval process by others, so I can't give you the exact detail, but those are for services that they have provided since the shutdown last fall.
And coming from the reserves that we earmarked.
Oh, yes. Yes, I'm sorry, that's true.
Thank you. Page six, 403-220, I think. It looks like an M&amp;T Bank Wilmington Trust payment. Ten and three, thirteen thousand dollars and change. Do you know what, can you tell us what that is?
That's for, that's for work that is being done as part of the Water Department bond. These are payments that have been in process for a long, long time. We're paying down a 20-year note for improvements to the Bowles Brook and to the water treatment facility.
Thank you. The next page, account number 403-226, North Bennington, I, oh, hydroelectric, it says allocated access under the description.
Yes.
Allocated access, I'm sorry.
Yes, so that we, we use the hydroelectric facility at the Paper Mill Village to fund or to power all of the town's facilities having to do with the wastewater treatment process. So these are a portion, this is our portion of the payment to those facilities for use, I would imagine, over the last 30 days.
Gotcha, thank you. And I think I have one more. Yep. This one is probably just a moving of money. On page eight, the last one, Town of Bennington Water Sewer Bills. I understand that our water and sewer function is a separate entity, but I ask you this every year because I don't understand the movement of money.
Yes. Every, every facility pays into the Water and Sewer Fund where we provide water and sewer services. So that would include all of the facilities of the General Fund, all of the facilities of the Highway Fund, Water Fund, and Sewer Fund, as well as the Recreation Facilities. So these are bills to all of those entities for their water and sewer for the last quarter.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I have one question, Mr. Hurd, please. Page three, item 403191, ER Bennington Solar I, what, I have no idea, for fourteen thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars. What exactly is that?
That is, that is also a credit. We are also using the solar facility south of town, down below the Sheriff's Department, as one of our potential power sources. We get a reduced rate on the electricity, but we reimburse them a certain percentage of that cost for providing that facility for us.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, all those in favor of accepting the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? We are unanimous, thank you. Next, we have public comment, and quite a list tonight. So we will start with Colleen Kelly, request for, I'm gonna let you tell us what that is, Colleen.
(inaudible) members of the Select Board of Bennington, the Bennington Town Manager, and to all attendees here at the meeting, by person or on video. Is this not?
Well, I'm hard to hear.
Can you be closer?
Just toss close to it, Colleen.
Speak right into it.
All right. My name is Dr. Colleen Kelly. My family and I moved to the Bennington area in 1992, and we've lived in Old Bennington since 1993. I'm a retired Colonel with the Air Force Reserve, and my most recent assignment was as Deputy Surgeon General for NORAD, U.S. Northern Command. Have seen quite a bit around the world, as well as in our local community. I come to you today to respectfully request that the Select Board members, on behalf of all persons in the Town of Bennington, consider and pass a resolution condemning the attack on our U.S. Constitution and on the protections that it provides to all persons in the U.S. That is, all persons, regardless of their citizenship, immigration status, race, religion, or political beliefs. As a military officer who took an oath to support and defend the Constitution, and as a physician who took an oath to do no harm, I cannot stand quietly by at the side while the core tenets of our Constitution are being violated and being used as a weapon against individual persons and so many other entities within our great country. To this point, I have a copy of the, a copy of the resolution that was passed in Rutland, a similar resolution, and I'll hit a few of the key points there. The recent actions by federal authorities represent a dangerous escalation of government overreach, a violation of these constitutional protections. History has shown that when the rights of any group singled out and violated, it opens the door for similar abuses against many others and can become an unstoppable force of its own. The silence of public officials potentially implies a permission to continue the abuse and will embolden those who seek to dismantle the rule of law and dismantle our communities through fear. Therefore, be it resolved, that the city of Bennington pass a resolution to unequivocally condemn all violations of the process, condemn the weaponization of government power against individuals, to affirm unwavering commitment to protecting the constitutional right of all people in our city, to not target individuals based on who they are, and to defend our citizens based in justice, accountability, and equal respect for all. History clearly shows us the risks and damaging effects of silence in the face of danger. As per a 2005 United Nations General Assembly Resolution, we need to speak up because the far-reaching effects of the current administration are a warning to all people of the dangers of hatred, bigotry, racism, and prejudice. These words are on the wall at the UN. These words need to be at the heart of our Constitution, which is where they are and which is being violated. I humbly and fervently request that we take a stand together on behalf of all persons, all persons, who live, work, study, visit Bennington, and do so by passing a resolution that condemns the attacks of due process and that affirms the constitutional rights of all persons in Bennington. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Next, we'll hear from Kelly Carroll. I'm a CPAR guest speaker.
That's hard to follow. Kelly Carroll, resident of Bennington and Chair of Bennington's Community Policing Advisory Review Board. Community policing is about strengthening the relationship between the community and local law enforcement. It requires collaboration and trust, as both share the common goal of ensuring public safety. When the, the voting was done in March, the town voted in favor of Article VII, so CPAR thought that it would be helpful in understanding what is currently occurring right now. Mr. Christopher Brickell, the Executive Director of the Vermont Police Academy, will be the guest speaker at CPAR's June 26th meeting. Executive Director Brickell has over 36 years' blocks of experience in law enforcement and previously served as the Deputy Director of the Vermont Criminal Justice Council. He will be speaking about Vermont's Act 56. Act 56, Act 56, an act relating to the professional regulation of law enforcement officers by the Vermont Criminal Justice Council, VCJC, passed the Vermont Legislature in 2017 and became effective July 1, 2018. It establishes a framework for the VCJC to investigate complaints, review certifications, and impose sanctions on law enforcement officers, including written warnings, suspension, or revocation of certification. So basically, it's the state of Vermont's police oversight process. So save the date, Thursday, June 26th, at 6:00 PM, in the Bennington Firehouse, third floor, multipurpose room right here. Cat TV does record our meetings, but they are not live, but we invite you to join us. And then also, if I can just remind everybody that this is National Police Week, and National Police Week is May 11th through 17th, and it serves as a crucial time to honor and remember those officers across the country who have fallen, while also recognizing the ongoing efforts of officers who continue to protect our communities each and every day. National Police Week pays tribute to these heroes and acknowledges the vital role they play in our society. So please take an opportunity this week to reflect on their sacrifices and thank all the members of law enforcement for their unwavering commitment to keeping us safe. Thank you.
All right, next we'll go with Debbie Matt on the Senior Center.
Debbie Matt, Bennington. We, meaning the people that frequent the center the most, want to know the rules and regulations of the Y's involvement with running the Senior Center. We would like something in writing, and how much money is in the Senior Center's account, how many accounts, and if some of these accounts are for specific spendings, which ones are they, and exactly what can they be spent on. There's talk again about putting some of our items into storage at the Y again, and I heard we'll have to join the Y to participate in functions at the Senior Center in order to attend. Some people only come once a week, and I don't think it's fair. The board has promised that we would never be charged to partake in the Senior Center. And I was on vacation for a week, and when I come back, I discovered that the Y had put a free sign on some of the furniture that we have there. And there's been no discussion with anybody on why, or, like I said, we would like to know what the rules and regulations are, that things can just happen without any consultation with those of us that are there. Another issue came up. Henry teaches ukulele lessons for free. He has gone from one to two people to maybe ten to twelve. He comes in with music and has requested copies for the students that are there. And this week, he was told that it's expensive to make copy, and it comes out of the Y's budget, and they're not going to make him copies anymore. And need I tell you, he was very upset about it, and I promised him I would look into it for him. And I'd had people say to me that they want the old Senior Center back, which I know is not going to happen, but we're dealing with it the best we can. And another question I have regarding the Green Mountain Express, if we have a trip planned where we have to purchase tickets ahead of time and they do not provide us transportation, who's paying for those tickets?
Thank you. Okay. Next, I have Wendy Sharkey on IMLS.
Jenny, Jenny, I'm Wendy Sharkey. I'm the Director of the Bennington Free Library, and Jenny Rosicky from the North Bennington Library is joining me on the same topic, so we'll do this together as a tag team. President Trump announced his skinny budget on the May, May the 2nd this year. It is only a proposal at the moment, but there is no funding in it for IMLS, which is the Institute of Museum and Library Services. This was set up under the Museum and Library Services Act in 1966, and it was for federal funding for state libraries. It was updated in 2018 during President Trump's first term to establish a minimum rate for the state libraries. Last year, the IMLS received $266 million, which was about .003% of the federal budget, or 75 cents per capita. The Vermont State Library is heavily funded by this money, about a third of their budget. Libraries in Vermont, the regular public libraries in Vermont, get no federal funding at all. We do, however, benefit widely from the services that they offer. We received support services such as webinars and trainings from them. We provide, they, the state provides a wonderful interlibrary loan service and a courier service. The Bennington Free Library alone circulates about 400 books every month between various libraries in the state. Without these two services, it would cost us somewhere in the region of $20,000 a year to circulate those books. So the courier service, which we pay a couple of thousand for each year, is a vast savings. We also get funding for, through a grant, for the summer reading programs that both our libraries have. And here in Bennington, we also get a supplement to our large print collection, where we have items on long loan from the state, which means that people who need large print items can actually physically read them. They get a better selection. So basically, we'd like to see that the activities continue. Obviously, we need our support services for our people to stay up to date with the latest technology, the latest trends in libraries and suchlike. And with that...
Hello, Jenny Rosicky here. Thank you, Wendy. And I would like to let you all know, the handout that was put around was sort of some statistics about what the Department of Libraries does with the funding they get, and the, well, the services and statistics that funding supports that we do throughout the state. And also that the funding for this year, and I think next year, have been largely promised. So at the McCullough Library, we receive less than $1,000 in federal funding that supports our courier service and for a summer reading program every year. But what I'd like to say are, there are things you can do if, if you're aware and would like more information. One, one of the best things you could do is use the library. To that end, if you'd like a library card, I brought some applications with me, so there's no excuses. Come see me, we'll get you set up. Attend programs. Stop by, we have our courier deliveries on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and so you can see the mountain of books that we receive every, twice a week, incoming and outgoing. So you can see that at work. So learn more about interlibrary loan. I'd be happy to show you how it works. Also, contact your representatives. This is the time to do that, if this sort of thing, if this sort of uncertainty upsets you, this is the time. Join advocacy organizations like the American Library Association, the Vermont Library Association, and United for Libraries, which is especially for friends and trustees. Anybody can join that one. So that's the really good advocacy way. And, you know, to help us create resilience for these organizations that you value, I'd encourage you to donate and get involved at either the McCullough Library and/or the Bennington Free Library, both of us. So that's, that's it. That's what I've got.
Thank you very much. All right, now I'm going to bring up Jason Frederickson on Jay's Storewide Sale.
Jason Frederickson, Bennington, Vermont. Good evening, Select Board Members, Town Leaders, Neighbors, and everyone in our community. Tonight marks an exciting and important moment in the journey. As of this week, the transition from Jay's art shop on South Street to the Bennington Artisan Market, BAM, has officially begun. The store remains open Monday through Saturday, with current hours from 10 to 4 on weekdays, and until 3 on Saturdays, closed Sundays. We'll also be announcing select evening hours soon to give folks a little extra time to shop. A closeout sale is now underway to help fund the transition to BAM, offering 50% off all art supplies and everything else in the store, including souvenirs, Vermont shirts and sleepwear, plush animals, jewelry, and bath and body items, greeting cards and collectibles, many limited edition signed prints, unframed and framed. The sale is more about, is just, is, the sale is about more than just clearing shelves. It's a meaningful way to support Jay and Jones Winnenberg, who owned and operated the store for 53 years and are now beginning retirement at home while navigating dementia and ongoing health challenges. It also helps build momentum for BAM and strengthen our downtown. Every purchase matters. We're especially grateful to be working with Dan Winnenberg, whose steady support has been a bridge between Jay's remarkable legacy and the future we're building with BAM. Later this week, we'll be launching the official fundraising campaign, a grassroots effort to raise $250,000 to complete the purchase of the business and frame shop, bring in new art supplies, a modern point-of-sale system, and reopen the space as a refreshed, reimagined store. The announcement will be shared across Facebook and with local press. This is our moment to show the strength of community through belief, participation, and pride in what this store means to Bennington's past, present, and future. Because BAM isn't just a store, it's a revitalized space where custom framing and art supplies will remain a trusted resource for artists, hobbyists, and our wider community. Vermont-made and regional artisan products find a year-round home, where creative retail adds energy and depth to our downtown experience while staying connected to what makes Bennington special. The storewide sale has started, the vision is in motion, and now we're asking everyone, residents, visitors, business owners, to shop local, spread the word, and help us write the next chapter together. Thank you for believing in this project, for supporting Jay and Joan, and for stepping up to help shape what comes next. Together, we have the chance to turn this transition into something lasting for Bennington. Thank you.
Okay, next, Erin Williams, Bennington, B C M C C Events.
Erin Williams, Bennington, Vermont. On behalf of the Bennington County Multicultural Community Center, we have two upcoming events that I would like to invite the public and broader community to attend. So, on Tuesday, May 20th, the Manchester Community Library is hosting an event titled "Introducing the Bennington County Multicultural Community Center Refugee Resettlement and Community Programs." This event will be an opportunity for the Manchester community to learn about the Center's resettlement work in Bennington and our expanding and ongoing community projects and programs. It is free and open to the public. It begins at 5:30 PM, located at the Manchester Community Library, and I would encourage everybody to attend, to echo the sentiment that was shared by the librarians here tonight. Right now, one of the most important things you can do is just show up to stuff that you support. So, in general, do that if you'd like to. And our second event will be on Saturday, May 24th. It is for MayFest. We are hosting partner organizations having a wonderful event in our space. So ACT Bennington is offering a free BIPOC youth hair clinic, which is free for youths ages five to 18, and it is in collaboration with Sheila's Mobile Hair Braiding and the Rutland Area Branch of NAACP. So we're really excited. ACT is one of the organizations that has reached out to us about using the Center as a community space to host events, and it could not be more fitting that this is for MayFest this year. So if you're interested in, or know a youth who would be interested in attending that, the registration details are available the registration details are available through ACT Bennington's website and social media. So, thank you.
Kelly Carroll, I see you here again for a Christmas charity, and I cannot decipher the rest.
Sorry about that. I didn't want to push the three-minute thing before, so. Just two things, July 12th, it's a Saturday, the VFW Post 1332 Riders and the American Legion Post 13 Riders are working together on a Christmas charity ride. It's going to be a scenic route through Vermont, and the proceeds are going to benefit the Bennington County Sheriff's Department's Secret Santa Program and the Bennington County Toys for Tots. So if you have a motorcycle and you're interested in riding, come on out, help us raise some money to keep it local for holiday presents for kids. And then secondly, on this Saturday, May 17th, the Willumsack River Walk is happening at 9:00 AM. And for those of you who know Charles Jingo, he is an unsung hero that is -- has been like for years, decades actually. So please join us at 9:00 AM to help us celebrate him. The walk will start down by where the new skate park is, and it will go up the river walk, and it will end on Main Street at the children's -- I'm sorry, I was not planning on doing this. Bridget, do you know the...
Yeah. Childhood Intervention Center.
Childhood Intervention Center, so my apologies. So please join us. The walks are free, they're pet-friendly, and there will be refreshments, so, and they're open to everyone of all ages, so thank you.
Last on my list is our own Clark Adams, who wants to tell us about some t-shirts he has for sale.
I'm Clark Adams, resident of Bennington. We'll start off illegally. I am not speaking for the town of Bennington, okay? Nor am I soliciting any funding. I'm here to make people aware of an opportunity to celebrate the upcoming 250th anniversary here in the state. The shirt I'm wearing is being sold by the Bennington Rotary Club as part of their efforts to fund many other activities here in town, including scholarships for our local students. The shirts come in gray and black. Multiple sizes, small up through triple, extra-large, and at the triple extra-large and the two extra-large, they're $30, and all the other sizes are $25. Our meeting is at noon on Friday over at the Elks Club Carriage House. If somebody wants to pop in, I'm sure there'll be some shirts available, or if you can get in touch with me, and I will line you with some folks who can get shirts for you. Again, it's recognizing our history and, more importantly, helping us recognize the hard work of our community and address a lot of the needs that we're all aware of in this community. And given this is not a commercial, and I don't represent the town of Bennington in any capacity, thank you.
Thank you, Clark. Anyone else that wishes to speak that did not sign up on the sheet? All right. Stu, is there anything in Debbie's questions that you feel comfortable answering this evening?
Actually, no, but I do apologize to Debbie and Eleanor. They did contact me by email last week. By the time I got some answers, I was not able to get back to them, and I got tied up with other things. Meant to get to them today, unfortunately, I did not. The copy issue, I can say, is a non-issue. That was an overstatement. Copies will be available as needed for those folks who are teaching classes there. Some of the issues having to do with furniture removal and those kinds of things are really, I think, things that the Y and the seniors there need to get together with and understand. And finally, the Y is offering memberships to people who are in the senior center. Those who cannot afford or do not wish to join the Y will continue to be able to attend our senior center. The town will actually be subsidizing any costs associated with those as we do today. So that, it's really a non-issue, but they are trying to build their membership, and they are trying to bring seniors into a variety of programs that go beyond the senior center to the Bennington Sports Center and those kinds of things. So that's the best I can do, and I will be emailing more specifics to these two folks.
I need a clarification.
Go ahead.
When you're saying the town would be subsidizing seniors, seniors can use the senior center for free, always have been.
That's correct.
We aren't going to have to pay them to use -- or pay for them to be in the senior center?
No, no.
Okay.
It'll be available to them at our expense, though. That's what I mean, just as we do now.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Moving on. Next item on our agenda, the Willumsack Valley Path Extension from the Bennington County
Hi, everyone. My name is Samantha Page, and I work with the Bennington County Regional Commission. And I'm here today to talk about an opportunity for the town to expand on the existing Willumsack Valley Path Network through a connection in one of the town's cemeteries. So I'll give a little bit of context to this proposal, and then we can talk a little bit more about the details. So as many of you are probably familiar, this is a map of the existing and planned path network through Bennington's downtown and some of the surrounding urban area in Bennington. So this map includes the River Walk, the rail trail projects that have been built out over recent years, and it also shows some of the planned extensions, including the Ninja Path. What I'm hoping we can talk about today is an opportunity to expand a connection in the southeastern part of the downtown. There's an opportunity to connect where the River Walk ends in downtown Bennington to the town's Headwaters Park through some sort of low-cost improvements through the cemetery and on current streets. So the Headwaters Park is an amazing resource that Bennington has. There are miles of trails that community members can use to explore the river, wetlands, natural features just outside of downtown Bennington. But right now, it's not easily accessible by foot or by bicycle, so this amazing resource is very close for a lot of community members, but still hard to get to. And the proposal I'm here to talk about today is an opportunity to improve the connection to this resource that's already part of the town's publicly-owned lands. So to start, I would -- we're envisioning an opportunity to create a connection on existing streets, namely Scott and Safford Street, through paint or signs, so just creating some markings that would direct people at the end of the rail trail to Main Street. And then there are a couple of different possibilities for how pedestrians or cyclists or people riding scooters or any other mobility devices could get from Main Street into Headwaters Park. The recommendation that I would like to make is for users to go through the cemetery. This would require an opening of the gate that's currently facing Main Street, but it would be nearly entirely off-street, so it would be a very safe option. This option would avoid steeper grades. There's already a graded roadbed that connects from Main Street through the cemetery. And it would be an opportunity for the town to highlight this historic cemetery, this existing green space, and potentially draw more attention to this historic asset in the community as well. Some other options include going along Morgan Street. This is less favorable because an all-on-street route introduces more possibilities for conflicts with moving vehicles. It's also a steeper route up that hill, and it's very narrow between the retaining wall at the eastern edge of the cemetery and the houses on that street, so it's not preferable for some of those reasons. And then there's -- we considered a possibility of going through part of the park coming off of Beach Street on the east side, but unfortunately, the need to create a bridge over the river in that area would be a multimillion-dollar project, would be a really big undertaking. And so this is kind of a -- detracts from what otherwise would be a very scenic route, but less viable, especially in the short term. I'll also just add, in terms of thinking about a potential connection through the cemetery, that this idea has been shared with the Historic Preservation Commission in Bennington, and they have weighed in on it and been favorable in considering this connection as a way to introduce more people to this asset in the community and activate a public space in So just to kind of give a visual of what this connection would look like, you could approach from Main Street, which is shown in the upper-left corner. This is looking towards the cemetery to the south. There's a graded roadbed already, and so you could potentially walk or cycle up. Then you encounter the fencing on the right-hand side. As part of this proposal, we'd ask the town to crosswalk to safely get across Morgan Street and potentially some improvement to the shoulder so that there would be a little bit of a wider shoulder for people to walk on to get to the trailhead for Headwaters Park, which is just a few feet up or to the south on Morgan Street. So in conclusion, what I'm proposing or asking for the select board to consider is a few next steps in terms of moving this project along, including adding signage to Scott Street that would direct pedestrians, cyclists, or other users at the end of the River Walk towards this connection, opening the fence to the cemetery that faces Main Street, and then further considering and estimating what labor and expenses would be needed to actually pave a path through the cemetery and make it even more accessible along the lines of what the River Walk and rail trail include already, adding a crosswalk on Morgan Street and improving the shoulders to make it safer and more comfortable for all users, and proposing a collaboration between the town's Community Development Director and the Historic Preservation Commission to collaborate and develop interpretive signage that could be placed in the cemetery and connect people to this amazing historic resource that Bennington has. So thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, I appreciate the applause, but if we could hold those at some level, we -- they do -- the cumulative effort is adding significant time to the meetings. Since I've been told we should expect a motion on this subject, this gives us an opportunity to make a couple changes in how we are talking about these things as a board. What I'm suggesting, and I think we're going to try it this evening, is that we go back to the way things kind of were in the past, in that the speaker will speak, we'll take questions from the public first, at which point we will accept any motions, and then the board will have their discussion and ask their questions. So with that in mind, would anyone from the public like to comment or ask a question in the back row? If you could use this microphone up here, please. When we have a guest, we like to use the public microphone.
Hello, my name is Robin Tarnas, I live in Bennington. Every time I travel to a new city, I try to explore it, and the sense of a city is rarely obtained from a car or a freeway. The best way to get to know a city is to walk through it and to find a trail and walk through it. Over the past 20 years, Bennington has been making an effort to extend our trail system. This provides recreational activities, it helps introduce visitors to the town, and it allows easy access to different parts of the town. We are now considering extending the trail to Main Street, to the historic cemetery, and to the Headwaters Park in the forest to the south. Now, each town tries to show off different -- something that they're proud of. Some cities try to show off their river, and we have a river. Some cities provide access to the outdoors even in the winter, but this trail will allow access right from Main Street into the outdoors and walk to the Headwaters Park, which is otherwise almost inaccessible during the winter. Some cities have trails that are surrounded by beautiful architecture. Well, this trail will cross Main Street and give views of our architectural gems, including the newly refurbished Ben High. Some trails display a town's history, and this trail will go right through the cemetery and show the history of Bennington right there with appropriate signage. And some trails have views of surrounding mountains. Well, we are surrounded by mountains, and one of the best views is from the trail up Main Street to Mount Anthony beyond. So Bennington has it all, so I recommend that we plan ahead and build this extension to our current trails and show everything there is to -- that is great about living in Bennington.
Thank you. Anyone else? Second row.
Hey there, I'm Nathan Fowle, I'm from Powell. I am a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee there and also the Conservation Commission. I'm not here sort of in any sort of official role, just as a private citizen. I just wanted to give a little context on sort of why Powell has an interest in this too. We've recently made a little bit of progress in getting permission to add some signage for the Western doing the Greenway, which is going to run from Williamstown connecting in with the Mohegan Trail through Powell and get us pretty close to the end of the old trolley bed, which this connection from, you know, Main Street through the graveyard sort of, I feel like is the first step in eventually sort of recognizing this vision of kind of creating a path that can take us all the way through Bennington, through Powell, and into Williamstown. So Powell is working sort of from the south coming north towards this as well, so yeah, I know this is a small step in the grand scheme of things, but I think it's a really important one to start to kind of guide people in that direction, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, I'm Al Bishefkin from Bennington. Dr. Tarnas did a great job of describing how this could be an asset for Bennington and for the visitors coming to Bennington. It also would be an asset for the people living here. A healthy community has parks, has recreational opportunities and ways for people to walk around, ways for people to ride their bikes, and ways for people to be outdoors. I think this would really help Bennington, and I encourage you to support it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Michael?
My name is Michael McDonough. I serve as Chair of both the Bennington Planning Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission. Much has been already said tonight about the merits of the Much has been already said tonight about the merits of the proposal, but I want to put it into the context of both those commissions. For some time, the Bennington Planning Commission has supported the development of a community pathway system throughout Bennington, and in this instance, starting movement outside of Bennington. And that support has shown itself in our present town plan and will be a significant portion, sort of be a significant representation in the new town plan that we are currently working on. The most recent evidence of the Planning Commission's support of this pathway system within Bennington was the effort with community input to provide the system with a name that is marketable and understandable for both citizens and visitors, and which also has names for separate subcomponents of that pathway system. And so, that is where the name Wulumsek Pathway System was brought into the picture. Regarding the proposal on the cemetery, there was discussion, I think a lot of people were involved, formally and informally, with a new vision, if you will, for an historic cemetery. A vision which brings information, understanding, and knowledge to the community about the importance of its historic cemeteries. And I would offer that the Town Village Cemetery is perhaps one of the most significant historic cemeteries, partnering with the Old First Church Cemetery. Discussions were had about the inclusion of this kind of activity in a municipal or a public cemetery. And Jim, if I may reference your efforts prior to your joining the Select Board, Jim did some comprehensive research, which explains the acceptance, the changing attitudes about our cemeteries. In short, suggesting they are not places just to sit alone and unvisited, but to be places which people can learn about the people who have gone before them and about what some of those people represented in the community. And if there was a taboo about the use of cemeteries beyond burial sites, it seemed very clear that that taboo is being replaced with this new vision for community cemeteries. To that end, we brought the question to the Historic Preservation Commission, which had sensitivity relative to the use of the cemetery in this fashion, and had incredible sensitivity to the history that is represented there, not only in the names, but, as a word has been mentioned before, the architecture of that cemetery. It's not just a question of buildings through the community. Our cemeteries provide outstanding and long-lasting elements of history in the design of, as I'd say it, the architecture of that cemetery. And so, the Historic Preservation Commission concluded with one vote against to support this proposal to integrate the Village Cemetery into the Bennington-Wulumsek Pathway System. And there was great interest on the part of the Historic Preservation in seeing this come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak? All right, seeing no one, I'm told to expect a motion.
Wait, wait, wait. We received no information in our packets when we picked them up Friday. It was emailed to us Saturday. As of last night at 9:00, there was no information for any citizen who wanted to try to find information out about this. This is the first that, at least I'm hearing about this. The people of Bennington know nothing about this, and I think a lot of people are going to have questions and people are going to have concerns. I would ask, who requested the BRCRC to do the work on this?
I did the work on this as part of a community group of people who are interested in creating a path between Bennington, Pownell, and Williamstown, and then I asked to be put on the agenda for this evening.
So, a group of citizens approached you?
Well, as part of my work with BRCRC, I collaborate with this community group, yes. Yeah.
Okay. Well, for at least seven years, I've come to meetings with the same questions. I'm aware where various bike paths have been proposed around Bennington, most of the public isn't. And I wanted to be fair, so everyone would know. And the biggest question I've asked for seven years that no one has answered, if we're going to take away public parking that has been on our streets for 50 to 100 years, where are people going to park? Now, on Scott and Safford, I'm not sure. Do you want to put pathways in the road or on the sidewalk?
Nancy, I'm going to interrupt you quickly here. I'm not saying you can't ask that question, but I think it would be more appropriate after we've heard the motion and moved into board discussion on the topic.
Okay. But the public, the general public has no idea. I think it's unfair. A small group of citizens have wanted to do it. They've already gotten to this point. We have to at least give people two weeks. I don't want to jump into a motion and move it ahead. And again, I have been repeatedly, I had a letter in the banner a couple of years ago. People in Bennington need to have a say about where some want to put pathways. We all live here.
All right. I think I'm inclined to hear the motion.
I have a motion. Is my mic working?
It is.
It's okay. Thank you. And I don't mean to try to respond to Nancy's comments, but this is work of a longstanding committee that's been involved in pathway projects through the area, in support of specific plans that have been outlined in the Bennington Town Plan for many years. So, my motion is really following up on the specific items that were laid out in the presentation that Sam gave, and so I wrote them down to try to make them as clear as possible. So, the motion is, obtain and install signs and pavement markings to direct path users from the current terminus of the River Walk at Park Street to and along Scott Street on the existing sidewalk and street to Safford Street, and then to the crosswalk on Main Street. Install pathway signs to direct people through the town-owned green space adjacent to Main Street and through the Village Cemetery to Morgan Street. Open the gate located in the fence that currently separates the cemetery from the green space. Create a crosswalk on Morgan Street to establish a connection between the pathway through the cemetery and the existing pathway leading to Headwaters Park. Direct staff to return a report to the Select Board no later than June 23, 2025, with information on the cost and availability of town resources needed to install a paved pathway from Main Street through the Village Cemetery to Morgan Street. Direct staff to work with the Historic Preservation Commission to develop content and a cost estimate for an interpretive sign or signs to be located in the green space and/or cemetery. Town staff are encouraged to coordinate with the Bennington County Regional Commission as needed.
We have a motion and a second, at which point I will open it up for discussion from the board.
Where are you proposing the bike path be on Scott Street and Safford Street?
I think mostly in the street with painted markings in the street, so not proposing any construction or removal of parking at this time.
And how?
Can I follow up on that? If you might, I think I can clarify. So, I know that the discussion specifically talked about just putting signs to direct people along Scott Street, because the River Walk ends just before the beginning of Scott Street. So, there would just be signs of potentially the so-called shero markings on the pavement to show that bikes, you can expect bikes to potentially be on the road, and there's an existing sidewalk on Scott Street and Safford Street, so the pedestrian use would be on the sidewalk.
So, the bicycles will be on the road, and there will be markings on the road for the bicycles?
That is the plan.
Okay. So, people who have parked there, homeowners, people with apartments, who've been able to park in front of their homes for 50 or 100 years, what will they do? There are people that work at Bennington Elementary School. They park on Scott Street because there's no other place to put their cars. If they can't leave their cars there, where will they put their cars?
At this time, there's no plan to remove any parking or prohibit parking on those streets. The recommendation is that there would be painted markings to indicate that there might be bikes traveling in the road, but it wouldn't disrupt current parking availability.
But this is kind of half in and half out. We're going to encourage people to bicycle there, but if cars want to park there, that really doesn't make sense.
It's not uncommon in other towns, I'm sure in other towns in Vermont, to have these sort of painted markings that show arrows and a cycling sort of figure in the street that shows that bikes can travel in the road, they can travel in a car lane. It would be sort of the lowest-cost way to introduce bike travel along these streets towards Main Street, and would be, I guess the reason we're recommending this is because it would be the least disruptive to the cars and people who live in that area already while still indicating that this is an acceptable and welcome use for cyclists and pedestrians in the area, too.
And you want the cars to be on Safford, or the bikes would be on Safford Street also, not on the sidewalks?
If I could just jump in here, I think that what's being explained to us is that the markings on those roads will indicate that the current road that is drivable is to be shared between traffic and bikes, bike traffic, which makes sense on some of those quieter, low-speed-limit roads. I don't see how this is a conflict.
Right. And I would point out, too, that bicycles are already allowed on those roads and are used by bicyclists.
Bicycles are allowed on the roads, but we, as a town, other than Dewey Street, we do not have markings on the road encouraging, saying we support this. Safford Street is a very busy, high-volume street. You have a lot of delivery trucks that are on that street, you have cars go quickly. If cars are going to be parked there, you're going to have bicycles darting out around cars in the traffic. I thought there was a law that if you, so you're saying you don't want to have an actual pathway, you're just going to have designs?
For this initial proposal, I'm just asking or proposing for painted markings. I think if further down the line, there was a lot of cycling traffic on that road, maybe there would be a reason to reconsider, but for this initial proposal to sort of see how popular this is, I'm just asking for painted markings and signs.
And are you going to use the current crosswalk across from the Old Stewart's?
Correct, yes, on Main Street and Safford.
I know that this session, our legislature has been talking about changing a law, so bicycles no longer have to stop at intersections. Would anyone know if that law passed? Because that could create a real hazard if we're going to encourage bicycles to cross Main Street and they don't have to stop in an intersection.
Could I comment on that? That'd be fascinating. I have never heard of a proposal like that, and it would be extremely unsafe, and I can't imagine that anyone would even propose it, but I'll take your word for it that someone has. Unless that passes, deal with it.
Well, our legislature has discussed it. I wondered if they passed it.
I think if we, I read the updates from the legal cities and towns on a pretty regular basis, and I think if such a thing had passed, we would have seen it in that newsletter.
As somebody who cycles frequently, especially along these sections of road, I feel more comfortable, actually, on Safford Street than on Main Street. There is less traffic there. But generally, my understanding is that as a cyclist, it does sort of split the middle between a vehicle and a pedestrian, and so depending on where you're cycling, you should either follow the rules of the road, if you're on the road, such as stopping at intersections, or if you're acting as a pedestrian on the sidewalk, then you're supposed to follow sort of those regulations.
Our historic cemetery we're talking about had the massive destruction just a few years ago, and this cemetery, for decades, has had an issue with people going up and hanging out, especially at night. I didn't have a chance to reach out to the chief to see how much of an issue does this continue to be. To want to put a pathway to encourage the public to go there, to use it as a shortcut to go from point A to point B, knowing what's already has happened, I predict we would draw more people who haven't been there, who might decide it's a great place to hang out. I think it's disrespectful to use a cemetery for this. I hear people saying, well, there's a new way to use cemeteries. I disagree, and I wonder how many others will disagree, but again, most people in Bennington haven't heard about this yet.
Drawing the public to a cemetery for this use will discourage the kind of activity that our colleague at the end of the table is referring to.
And I actually thought about some other cities that I've visited that use their cemeteries in this way. I know last time I was in Baltimore, the grave of Edgar Allan Poe is a very popular tourist attraction in the city, and it's a way of, it seems to me, to be a way of promoting your city's history, because in that cemetery are a lot of the founding fathers of the town of Bennington, and I think that is history that needs to be shared and explored. But yeah, anyone else have?
As Mike McDonough mentioned, there's been a significant amount of research around that question of public use of historic cemeteries, and their research has pretty consistently found that the type of vandalism that is referenced tends to happen in cemeteries that are kind of abandoned and disused, whereas cemeteries that receive more regular public use, the presence of that public use tends to discourage vandalism. So, I think it's a positive step to trying to make sure that the cemetery is maintained and preserved. And the cemetery is not fenced off now. It's wide open to Morgan Street, so people can certainly get in there and, as was mentioned, hang out, but I think that that activity itself is less likely when people are moving through the cemetery and using it as a public space.
Jackie, then Clark?
Thank you for this. I think this is a great idea. Again, as somebody who cycles around town, actually, pretty frequently, the section that you had pointed out, I don't know if you want to go back to the slide with the three options, but this Morgan Street route that you've highlighted, that's actually part of a regular route that I take, all the way down to, like, Niles Road, and it's beautiful down there. It's got the perfect amount of hills, but this section is the scariest section of that ride on Morgan Street right there. So, I don't think that that's a great alternative to the cemetery route. I did walk the cemetery route with a group a few months ago, and that was really lovely. The other question that I had is, sort of, the path network that we have, it's not just for recreation in my mind, it's also an important means of transportation for a lot of folks that either don't have cars or don't want to commute that way. I noticed that some of this path goes right past the bus station. I wonder, could we add to some of the signage that we're putting out on this portion of the bike path, on other portions of the bike path, information about nearby bus stops, how to find that information? Is that something we could add?
I think that's a great idea. There's no, I don't think there's a set language for what that signage would necessarily say, so I think that's a great idea.
Great. Thank you.
Clark?
Good evening. I've heard multiple comments during many meetings here dealing with the pathway, and what, I'm a little bit lost, as I think one of the last meetings was mentioned, it's been like 15 years in the making for the Ninja Path, in multiple meetings, and what I, as a member of this community, like to see before I committed anything, I see the big picture. Where are we going? I had a family approach me about a year ago. I had a family approach me about a year ago, who live concurrent with the old trolley line that went down there. And they were concerned that their land was in danger of eminent domain. And they were really upset. They didn't think people were listening to their concerns. But then I was here that, oh, no, no, that's not going to be the case. But I've heard in at least two recent meetings, discussion of using that old trolley lane, which runs right toward their property. So I would like to see a big-picture map of all this. Where is this Headwaters Park? Is that going to be the end of it? Are there plans to extend it further? This gentleman, I can't remember his name, from Pownell, mentioned they're working north. I kind of would like to see the interface, where our pathways and their pathways are going to join.
Sure, I can speak to that. So at the time, at this moment, that hope and that plan is conceptual. There isn't a specific plan or alignment. I think a couple of people mentioned the trolley path, and this proposal is sort of coming out of hopes, or what had been called the trolley line path, but the reality has been that the right-of-way concerns and challenges for that project were big obstacles to it moving forward. And so there's actually no specific plans to follow the historic trolley bed. This proposal to make a connection from Main Street to Headwaters Park grew out of those conversations, because it seems like a really sort of low-hanging fruit way to advance possible connections from Bennington's downtown into the parks that the town already owns. And I think that the town, or we've gotten positive feedback from community members about the idea of connecting publicly-owned land in town. So either land the town owns outright, or that might be owned or in conservation with other organizations. But we would never want to disrupt anyone's private property or impede on private property, and so there are no plans to do that. And that's why this idea of a connection between Bennington and Pownell remains conceptual at this time, or will be on surface streets. Like Nate mentioned, the Western New England Greenway is a project that connects Connecticut, Massachusetts, and Vermont. And at this moment, most of that Greenway is a route on public roads, on surface streets that would direct cyclists from the southern part of Connecticut all the way to the Canadian border. And unless there is a dedicated path, like some of the rail trails or bike paths that exist on the East Coast, those cyclists are directed on roads like Burrington Road in Pownell, or South Stream Road, or some of the sort of lower-traffic streets. So I hope that kind of addresses some of the concerns about that potential, because it's not, there's no intention of disrupting private property.
I recall, I think it was two meetings ago, maybe miscounted, I specifically heard a reference of a pathway extending to Fuller Road that involved this. And as I said, my concern, or what I'd really like to see is this aspirational or potential. Now, what are we looking at? I hear about multiple meetings over many years with many people and many organizations. You know, are people just grabbing things and throwing it against the wall? I'd like to see some sort of structure. What are they using as a basis for this? But I specifically remember hearing a line going to Fuller Road, which, based on that previous trolley line. And again, maybe that's something that's just thrown out there, but I do remember hearing that during a presentation discussing the Ninja Trail. And as I said, for me, I would like to see, see it black and white, what's going on? You know, aspirational versus reality.
Maybe I can address that, because I had been involved in those discussions for some time, Clark. And I can just give you a very quick, big-picture overview. Again, not what we're talking about tonight specifically, but there exists entirely publicly-owned land from the center of town down as far as Fuller Road, along this little section here that we're talking about, and then through the Headwaters Park. In fact, that part is the only part that involves the old trolley line, the historic trolley line. It's within the Headwaters Park. Then a short section on Morgan Street, excuse me, on the street, on Morgan Street, to something that we talked about a while back, before the Select Board, the section of the so-called southern leg of the bypass, Vermont Route 279, that the state currently owns and intends to deed to the town. And that extends as far as Fuller Road. So it's all publicly-owned, there's no private land, there's no eminent domain being considered. But that would be the corridor. That's as far as that vision has gotten at this point, as far as this project. As far as the connection to Pownell, it's like Sam said, it would be primarily on entirely different roads. It may eventually hook into this thing closer to the center of town, but not most of it. And as far as this specific proposal tonight goes, one of the really nice things about this is it is all municipal property. There is no private property that would be impacted by this.
All right. Just interested in whether it's dead-ending, so we're going to make this connection to Headwaters Park, and maybe I'm looking down the road. Is this just part of that aspirational or consideration for this interconnected system? And I kind of, just for my own edification, I'd like to see.
Yeah, I would suggest that this would be part of a longer-term vision, but this really stands alone right now, because it, one of the things that is really remarkable about Bennington is that there's some extraordinary natural resource areas right near the center of town, potentially accessible by foot to everybody that lives in the center of town, except right now, it's very difficult and dangerous to get there. This really is an effort to provide a way for people in the community to get out, to exercise, to safely access and enjoy those resources. That's really what this specific proposal is about.
I'd like to ask the chair to call the question, please.
I have more questions, please.
We've all been hurt from, I want to ask the chair to call the question.
I have more questions. We've had citizens who've had plenty of time to do what they want to move their project forward. As a person on the Select Board, I'd like to represent the public who's in the dark. When you come out of, are you going to come out of the cemetery where you enter on Morgan Street?
Correct.
And when you go over Morgan Street, are you going to be on the road, or do you want to make a pathway on the grass?
I think, so the proposal is to have a crosswalk to the other side of Morgan Street, and then do some improvements to the shoulder on the eastern side. I don't have specific details. I think that's part of what my request is for the town to look into different design solutions, evaluate different costs of those solutions, and try to come to the best conclusion for a way to safely and comfortably get community members to the trails.
The access to Headwaters Park already exists near where?
I realize that. When I looked at Morgan Street over the weekend, there are no shoulders. People's front yards come right down to the blacktop. And if you're talking about putting a pathway in the road, there's no way that would be safe. Now, any of the property owners along Morgan Street, has anyone been contacted, or are they in the dark about this?
I don't think it would affect property. Again, this is like more detail, this is part of what the request to the town to sort of fully flesh out is. But the trailhead is like right off of this little area, so there's really, it wouldn't go, there are a couple of different entrance points to Headwaters Park, so maybe you're thinking of one that's...
Okay, so the entrance I saw with the sign is farther down.
Yeah, yeah. There's an entrance that's much further down Morgan Street, and then there's one that's really almost directly across from the cemetery.
Yeah, if I could, Nancy, the access from the cemetery and the access to the Headwaters Park are really no more than 100 feet apart. There are no houses there, and there is, in fact, a shoulder there. It just could, it could use a little bit of improvement.
I was looking at the one farther down where the sign is.
I think it's in the packet here. This is the photo of that entrance.
Well, I think we need to be fair, and I think we need to give the public a couple of weeks to hear from them. Again, this is a well-maintained historic cemetery. There's a lot of historical knowledge up there. And again, all the destruction up there a few years ago. So again, I think we owe it to the people of Bennington to hear from them. And I'm confused why we're hearing about this when I brought up at many meetings on your website, are the plans for a bike path up County Street? I've asked many times about the parking that could be removed by the football field and softball field. I've asked about the bike path on Dewey Street, the bike path behind the Putnam Block.
I'm sorry.
I don't know why we're jumping around.
Unfortunately, those questions aren't relevant to the topic at hand.
Well, I've tried getting answers for years.
And there are no current plans for any of those projects you're referring to.
Well, if you look at the VCRC website, the high school, the football, or the County Street plan looks pretty clear.
Those are, I think, more proposals than plans. And if they become a plan, then they would come before this board, at which point you would have the opportunity to speak to them.
And did you or Dan get any answer for half a million dollars we were talking about, that the taxpayers would pay down by the Ninja Trail? Do we know if we're going to get reimbursed?
Point of order, that's not this question.
Yeah, that's also not, unfortunately.
Well, I mean, we have all these different projects going along in Bennington. I'm just trying to try to get a handle.
Right.
What will this end up costing us locally?
Right, I understand that, but for the purposes of these discussions, we have to center our conversation around the topic at hand, which is the motion that Jim made. So do you have any more questions specifically regarding that motion?
Okay. I don't think it would be fair for us to vote on anything tonight. The public deserves two weeks to hear about this and come in and give us feedback.
I appreciate that. Is there any other discussion from the board?
Just point of information. So once, assuming that this motion passes, and we direct the town to evaluate this, that information will come back and we'll vote then to proceed further? Is that how this works?
That would be my expectation.
I just have a question, and I don't know if Jim or Sam or both of you can answer this. Are the discussions that have led to this presentation tonight, are those conducted in publicly-warned meetings?
No, it's a community group, so it's a group of people who are interested in path projects between Bennington, Pownell, and Williamstown, who get together and talk about how to make paths to connect those communities. But it's not an official capacity.
I guess if the discussions have not been publicly warned up until this point, Nancy may have a point on the time for public comment leading up to, so I'd like to, well, we have a motion on the table. I'm going to ask, I may want to make an amended motion. You guys have to tell me how to do that, or if we have to do something with the first one.
Well, it's Jim's motion.
Okay.
If he would be willing to entertain an amendment.
And he probably wants to know what the amendment would be.
He would probably want to know what that is.
I'm wondering if Jim would mind amending his motion to take this up at the next meeting and encourage the public to use the incoming communication channels that we already have set up to gather some feedback. I just think that might make sense if this, if what led us to tonight was not conducted in an open, publicly-warned meeting.
That's very reasonable.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate your concern. I appreciate what Nancy said. I would agree that, as Sam said, the ad hoc committee that's been working on this, those weren't widely publicized. At the same time, there were, there have been a lot of meetings and a lot of discussion about this corridor and this particular part of it, including a very well-attended walk that covered this route and stopped at two locations and talked extensively about this project.
And word got out about that walk, and I got positive feedback from it. So you're right.
Yeah. So, you know, I mean, I don't mind, you know, pulling back the motion or withdrawing the motion, but I really, I think, I've seen too many projects languish for too long, and I don't like, I don't like, you know, making progress and then stopping progress. But out of respect for, you know, an opportunity for people to come forward, I would withdraw the motion with the understanding that this same motion would be taken up at our next meeting, which would be one week from today.
So I'm going to second that amended motion. And Jim, I just want to say that I get some sense from board members, some positive sense from board members. I don't want this agenda item to drop either.
All right. So as I understand it, you are withdrawing your motion at this point in time?
Yes, and going on the record that I will reintroduce it, remain it at next Monday's meeting.
All right. I see Nancy recording the record. Thank you very much.
So do we need to do anything with that?
Nope. I think the motion's been withdrawn, so we can take it up again in a week.
Great.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike had something he wanted to add. Is that, is there a time for Mike?
Well, Mike, I'll allow, quickly, if you can.
Again, Michael McDonough, Bennington, Chair of the Planning Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission. There was discussion in this last round of talk that eventually led to the withdrawal of the motion, that somehow suggested that this effort that has been in existence for a long time, and I'm not talking about the cemetery option right now, that has been in process in a very grassroots way within the community. And it has been driven, in large part, by people who are of the psyche of recreation and pathways. And I would, I would say that those people who have forwarded these concepts are doing so, one, in the interest of the community, two, in a way that is taking load off the town to initiate these projects, but then bring them to the town. The town has sought grants in order to execute these grassroots ideas. And the result of that has been the pathway system that now exists, and the pathway system that we are hoping to expand. My only reluctance would be that this sort of hands-on action by the public has worked. And I'm reluctant to turn it into a full-blown town project in total, but only in segments that have been studied and molded by citizens within the community. So I want to express my caution about turning this process into a public-meeting process, not from the standpoint of denying access to the public, but from the standpoint of letting the grassroots people carry it forward and bring it to the Select Board in pieces, which has been the way it has been handled, to take on execution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
I'll just say that I heard from three members of this board that they would like to hear more public input, and I will remind the public that the fastest and easiest way to get us that input is to go to the town website, scroll down to where you see it says "Quick Links," and it says "Contact the Select Board," and we will receive those comments. Of course, you're welcome to come to the next meeting and comment as well.
Tom, if I could just make one more comment to what Mike just said. Mike, I appreciate that. The input that I am suggesting that we gather will just direct this board. I'm not suggesting a public hearing. That's not what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting that we do exactly what we set out to do tonight, but we open it up for a two-week period for public input.
One week in this case.
Say it again?
One week in this case.
I'm sorry, we are meeting next week because of the Memorial Day holiday, so we're opening it up for a one-week period. Thank you for that.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Next, on... Next on our agenda, we'll invite Chief Doucette to join us for an update from the Bennington Police Department.
Chief, you didn't hear this at the start of the meeting, but I have no mute button tonight, so if you've been there.
You don't have a mute button?
I don't have a mute button.
I could take care of that. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. As you know, this is our quarterly update with the Select Board. Lieutenant Randy is with me in the back of the room in case I go astray away here from what I really want to talk about. So we have lots of things to talk about tonight, and I know that we're a little bit behind schedule, so we're going to get right to it. Lots of things going on in the police world. It is National Police Week, for all of you that don't know that. And if you see an officer out and about, whether it's from the Police Department or the Sheriff's Department, State Police, wherever, extend a hand and say thank you. This is a situation where, or a week that we remember all law enforcement officers and, you know, that have made the ultimate sacrifice. And our folks do, in law enforcement, like to hear the words "thank you." So I just bring that up to you, and hopefully you'll see some officers and be able to do that. So with the Police Department, we have a promotional process that's well underway. We have nine officers that are seeking to be promoted. We're hoping to be able to finish the promotional process by the end of June. There'll be far more to come on that, and we'll certainly announce the officers that get promoted. It is a lengthy process. We'd have to follow the working agreement, but we are well on our way. Traffic calming, we talked about that for long periods of time, traffic calming and speed humps and this and that. And I want to let you all know that we did take delivery of our brand-new speed cart, and thanks to our Fleet Maintenance Director, that has been assembled. It came on two different pallets. I looked at that and said to Cam, "Oh, my lord." But Shannon put it together. It looks pretty good. Our next steps with that is to make sure that it looks like it belongs to the Town of Bennington Police Department and that we receive training in actually how to use that. It's not as simple as hooking it to the vehicle and setting it out and making it flash when people speed. I think you're all going to like it. It's pretty impressive. The cost of this was about $10,000, just shy of $10,000. And with that being said, it was brought to us through a highway safety-funded grant at no cost to the taxpayers in Bennington, so we wanted to share that with you as well, except the decals are going to cost us a little bit of money. We also want to share with you that our traffic safety program, formerly known as Click It or Ticket, now called Buckle Up Vermont, will be starting May 19th, and will run through June 1st. We'll be looking for violations that involve safety belts, car seats, booster seats, also looking at aggressive driving, such as speeding and things like that. You'll see us in Bennington, Old Bennington, and North Bennington. This is a county-wide project, so you will see the Sheriff's Department, and you will see Manchester and Win Hall, all in Bennington, and you will see Bennington in the North Shire as well. So we share that with you so that Mr. Hurd and I don't receive the complaints. Why are the Bennington Police in Manchester? We're teaching them how to do traffic safety. That's what we're saying. So with that being said, I also want to let you know, we hear a lot about traffic calming, and one of the biggest complaints we hear is, "Why do we have a cellphone law? People don't follow it." So two weeks ago, we had our four-day campaign utilizing highway safety grants, where we spent some time in North Bennington, Northside Drive, and right in downtown Bennington. Believe that, right in front of the Police Department, where we had spotters up on the steps. In four days, we issued 74 handheld device violations in four days. So, you know, I think it's important that you all understand that we do receive funding from the state of Vermont to the tune of about $100,000 to do these highway safety efforts. And we do write violations for handheld use of electronic devices. So wanted to share that with you. Where is our communications project at? Jeez, I came here, told you all about it and how we needed this new equipment because we had two catastrophic failures. Currently, our equipment is being shipped to Bearcom, which is down in Troy, New York, where it will be set up, it will be programmed, and there will be staging involved so that we make sure all of that equipment works before we get it to the Bennington Police Department. That project should be complete by the third week of June, and our Buildings and Ground staff is going to do an excellent job. They've already started. Our IT director is doing an amazing job as well, getting the communications center at the Police Department ready for these changes. And we are certainly looking forward to it, as I told you before. Hopefully, this equipment lasts at least 10 years. We'll be able to talk to law enforcement agencies in and around Bennington County, Rensselaer County as well, as we do a lot of work with them on the medical side of things. So, hey, K-9 Grizzly, everybody wants to see K-9 Grizzly. Where is Grizzly? Not in Alaska, not in Montana. Grizzly is at the Vermont Police Academy. He is currently in Week Eight. Oh, Officer Robert Morowski is with him. And so Grizzly is doing very well. On Friday, he'll be halfway through his training, and we're hoping that we will realize Gracie and Officer Morowski back on the road that first of a week in July. And we're really looking forward to that. When you see Rob, you'll notice that he's a little bit thinner than normal, because Grizzly has him on the run, for sure. And we're really excited about having him. So what else do we have going on? Well, going along with the bicycle path that you all just heard about and safety, we will be conducting a bicycle rodeo where we'll be handing out, fitting and handing out bicycle helmets on May 31st down in the Walmart parking lot. And we now have car seat technicians at the Bennington Police Department, and there'll be a car seat safety check there as well. So we'll be able to do all of that. There is no cost for this event, and we'll also be raffling off lots of bicycles. And we've been collecting these, they're all brand-new bicycles, and we want to give them away, without a doubt. So please, think about that. On the 31st of May, it'll be at about 10 o'clock in the morning before we finally get things going. We wanted the kids to have time to watch their cartoons, get out of bed, and get that homework done that they got on Friday. So we're really looking forward to that. It's something that we do every couple of years, and again, we're looking forward to that. New Experience Camp 2025 is about a little more than half-full at this point. We started taking applications about a week and a half, two weeks ago, and the applications are coming in. People have been asking, "Where do I get an application? Where do I get an application?" www.benningtonpolice.com. You can go right on our website, you can download the application. If you don't have that ability, you can certainly stop in, and our communications staff would be more than happy to give you the application. You just have to know if you're going Phase One or Phase Two, okay? And our Phase One kids are 11 to 13, and our Phase Two kids are 14 to 15. K-9 Training Yard, if you've been by our Isaac facility, you'll note that some of the obstacles that we've been building with Life Scout, Robert Meisel, some volunteers to include our Public Works Crew, and law enforcement officers from around Bennington County, you'll see that we've made some great strides and some great progress in that, and we're coming to the end of that project. It's a good thing, because anybody that knows anything about scouting knows that your project must be done before your 18th birthday. And our Life Scout, Robert Meisel, is very, very close to that 18th birthday, so we're hoping that by the middle of next week, that project will be complete. And it is fabulous. We've had a great time. The weather has not cooperated with us, and we've been doing some of the work inside and moving the obstacles outside, again, with the help of our Public Works Crew, because once they're built, they're very difficult to move. As strong as Lieutenant Randy is, can't do it. So where are we at with extra-duty things and questions that have been coming in? So I want to explain the 4120 process. 4120 is a code that we use within the Police Department for extra-duty details. When you ask for an officer to do an extra-duty detail, it's a form that says "off-duty officer request." We get a lot of that. We're working details at the hospital, we're working details at Southwest Tech, we're working details at the high school, we're working traffic details, we call them blue light details, and just countless projects that we have going on. We have contracts for periods of time, such as the hospital, and Southwest Tech, and the high school. And the officers actually enjoy working these extra-duty assignments. There is a fee that is set that I discuss every July with the town manager and our Finance Director, Melissa Courier. That fee is written into the one-page contract. It is signed, and the officers work the detail, and then my administrative assistant bills the hourly rate plus the fee that is charged by the town. That money, when the bill goes out, is collected, it goes to Joyce Silvestro, and is placed in general fund, okay? So that's what's happening. You will see officers on Northside Drive, you'll see officers working Mayfest, you've seen officers... We're extremely busy right now, and yes, we're short-staffed. So that leads into the staffing issues within the Bennington Police Department. Despite being short-staffed, I think my people are still, not I think, I know my people are still providing a high level of service as best we can to the residents of North Bennington, Old Bennington, and Bennington. We have been very successful with this 12-hour schedule, and we're doing our best to maintain that 12-hour schedule, because that's what the officers like. And it works for us. The reason why we've been able to save on some overtime is because Lieutenant Randy is very crafty with his scheduling, and he also will meet with officers individually. We don't make individual deals, because the working agreement does not allow for that. But we do sit down with officers and explain our situation, and the key staff that I have right now is very willing to swap their days off and things like that. So that's really a problem for us in the sense that we had an officer go through an exit interview today, and we have an officer leaving at the end of June, which will put us down eight out of 28. We are trying, ladies and gentlemen, to recruit and retain. This is not a soapbox, I'm not up here, this is not an infomercial. We are trying to come up with ways to recruit officers and retain officers. Most recently, we had three officers on their days off volunteer to go down to U Albany and meet with students that are going to be graduating from the University of Albany. We suffered tremendous loss when Southern Vermont College closed here. We can't fix it, I'm not going to dwell on it. Yes, I did attend Southern Vermont College, and I stayed here in Bennington. I've been here for, on the Police Department, I just started my 36th year, but that's what brought me to Bennington. That's what brought Officer Morowski to Bennington, and the list goes on and on. Detective Wilborn went to Southern Vermont College. She's not from Bennington either. But that was a really great recruitment point for us locally. So what we've decided to do is we're going to branch out and go visit other colleges and universities. We've tried Castleton, that didn't work for us, and so now we're going west. I think there's that saying, "Go west, young man." We're trying that. And we're trying to get into New York to recruit from over there. And it's difficult, because as I've told you before, when you drive through Troy and the electronic billboard says that they're currently hiring 80 police officers, we would like eight, 10%, and we're struggling. We are getting some applicants, we're sending people up for testing at the academy, and the results are just not favorable. The Police Academy right now dropped a lot of people throughout this training class that they currently have going. And part of the issue, I believe, as a chief, that's been around for a long time and sitting on the Vermont Association of Chiefs of Police Executive Board for the last 15 years, what we saw was that the Police Academy stopped with the written test. People get to the academy, and they just don't do well. And that written test is coming back in 2026. So we're looking forward to that. It's going to help us gauge people a little bit better and go from there. So I'm just sharing that with you, not to be a downer, but to let you know that we are working on it. We've had some brainstorming sessions. We'd love to work with Cat TV and maybe trying to make a recruitment video showing all of the positive things that happened in Bennington. I don't, I'm not here to speak on behalf of the Bike Path, but when Lieutenant Randy and others and I interview folks, they want to know what there is to do for Bennington, what type of recreation there is, and things like that. So, you know, adding paths to our community and connecting down to Williamstown, or however that happens, I'm not part of DPW, so I'm not part of that, but we would love to see that happen and just encourage people to come to Bennington. So with that being said, I would encourage all of you to, around September, when we start negotiating the working agreement, I would encourage all of you to work with the town manager and have an open mind, because we need to find ways to increase the hourly rates here so that we can be competitive. Currently, we are the lowest-paid municipal police department in Bennington County, and I'm not disrespecting any other law enforcement agency, but we do two and a half to three times the work that other municipal agencies do. And we have to find a way to get people here and keep them here so that we have a very bright future for the Police Department, not older balding guys like myself. And, you know, again, I've had an amazing career here. I love the Town of Bennington, but I don't plan on going anywhere until we can get the ship on the right path and get some people here. So with that being said, I think I've done a tremendous job. I told Mr. Hurd I would keep this to 20 minutes. I have three minutes left to answer your questions.
I'll start with the board, and Clark?
Hi, Chief, as usual, not sucking up to him, I like the chief. I'm glad you brought up the idea of the side jobs, because my email and my trips to Hannaford are peppered with people wanting to know, "If we don't have enough police officers, why aren't we doing other work?" And I know what's going on, and I try to explain them, but in honesty, it's very difficult for me to look at my face and say, "Absolutely, this is happening because of this, this, and this." So I appreciate that you've made it quite clear to the public, the mechanism, that in fact, it is not the taxpayer of Bennington that is funding these services, and that the Town of Bennington is not being neglected by the services being rendered. So I really want to make that clear to the public, and thank you for doing so.
You're welcome.
But, I was always a but. So as you may have heard, you know, I'm hanging out on Main Street. I wasn't panhandling, but that came up. And I try to explain to people that you're allowed to panhandle in Bennington, but some of the folks told me they feel uncomfortable by people approaching them repeatedly. And I tell, the only answer is, we need foot patrols, and that's not going to happen until we get those eight officers we so desperately need.
That, let me just, and I like you too, Clark, but I'm going to argue with you just a little bit.
No, argue, educate me.
We do, we do have a plan. We have been out on foot. I was out on Main Street this afternoon myself. If you notice, I got a little color. And I saw Mr. Sullivan when I came in here, I said, "He must have been walking the foot beat, too." But the bottom line is, is that, you know, we understand, we have a project on Main Street that the lieutenant and I have been working with Jonah. You guys are going to be really excited when you hear about it, but I'm not going to let the cat out of the bag yet. And we have a plan for Main Street, and we get it. I mean, there were, there were a lot of folks out and about today on Main Street, which I was really happy to see, but it was half-price pizza day. I can't, I'm not going to advertise, but it was half-price pizza day. I saw a lot of people going in and out of there, too. But, you know, it was nice to be out in nice weather, and we do know that the panhandling is very interesting, because, you know, we had the ordinance, we brought the ordinance back, and, you know, we see some panhandling down on Northside Drive as well. People do call the Police Department. If we receive a complaint, we do go and talk to people and say, "Hey, you know, please don't be so aggressive, you know, we get it." And so we do try to discourage that, but again, you know, they can be on Main Street as long as they're not impeding the flow of traffic and as long as they're not telling people to give them money. So again, we see it on Northside Drive, we see it at the Rotary down there in front of Price Dopper and Walmart, and, you know, we also see it down by all these. And people in Bennington, you know, if you don't travel and you don't get out, you know, this is a situation in Rutland that has just kind of gotten out of control. You know, we're, it's down in North Adams. You know, you go through Rutland on a nice day, and they seem to be looking, you know, for assistance. And we also go and we speak to folks, and we direct them to Economic Services. We also direct them to the soup kitchen right down the road here. So we do try our best so that, you know, the panhandling thing does not get out of control, but, you know... But, you know, we don't have really a way to prevent that at this time.
Okay. I have some other stuff, but I'll defer to my colleagues who probably have more to say than I have.
Ed, I saw your hand.
Thanks. I just have two comments, Chief. One is regarding the new experience camp. This is my pitch to the public. For those of you that have age-appropriate children for the police department's new experience camp, check it out. It's a tremendous program and I attribute a lot of success to my family to that program. I also want to mention my concern about the being down eight. That's a recurring number and that's a high percentage of the department. And we've been talking about that for a couple of years. So I wonder if there's anything that this board can do in terms of, you know, committee, you know, brainstorming. I'd just put myself out there if there's a way that more attention can be paid to that by this board. I'm interested. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. And I think that we'll, you know, September's going to be here. Before you know it, I have a great core staff. And, you know, hopefully the remaining folks will stick around until we can get through the next, you know, contract negotiations or working agreement negotiations. So, but thank you for that.
I'd just like to say how happy I am that the bike rodeo is happening this year. I was wondering about that this morning because it came up in my Facebook memories. Because I had the opportunity to attend last year and the kids really did have a wonderful time. And I will remind people if they think the Walmart parking lot is a little less accessible, our trail system will take them directly to the Walmart parking lot and more quickly than they think.
So we, our last bike rodeo was actually held here at the fire facility. And so, you know, we felt like we contacted a lot of kids from this section of town. So we moved it more down towards North Side Drive so we could kind of get into the Molly Stark School District and things like that. So we do try to, we do try to move that around. And we've got, you know, we've got, I mean, our communication staff that went off to this car seat technician program, I mean, it's not that simple. If you're a parent, you know it's not that simple to put a car seat in your car. And these folks right here in this building and downstairs in the bays spent an entire week learning how to do that safely. And so we're really looking forward to being able to do that. And again, it's no cost, you know? And my folks are coming out and volunteering their time to make this happen in addition to the 4120 work, in addition to working short shift and because they do care about the community. So I appreciate your comments on that.
Anyone else? Anyone in the audience?
I think Clark.
Well, I'm sorry, Clark. I didn't see your hand.
Yeah. A follow-up on Ed's concern and yours. You've mentioned two exit interviews of late. What's the tenure of these people? These less than five-year officers or?
One of them is retiring after 22 years of service here with the town of Bennington, but had service at another law enforcement agency prior to that. The other officer that is leaving basically just feels that law enforcement is not for them and is able to make more money doing something else. And a lot of respect for him and for coming out and being honest about it. But at the same time, it hurts us because he's not a body, but he's a knowledgeable individual. And as far as the officer that's retiring, you know, that's, that's the thing. You know, you, you know, you get involved in law enforcement now, you do 20 or 25 years and people, you know, people move on to the next chapter in their life. And, you know, there are, you know, you look at, I'm not going to mention the agency, but you look at this other agency where people, it's mandatory to retire at age 57. So I'd be pushed out this year. And, but then they bring them back as a contractor. You form your own LLC. You come back as a contractor and that way you beat having to pay into the pension system. And it's happening all over this country. We're trying to retain law enforcement now until age 62. Because, I mean, and I'm not going to talk about myself. We can talk about Cam, knowledgeable guy. He's been with us for a long time. I should talk about myself. Knowledgeable guy, been here a long time. And you really don't want to lose that. And, you know, so I, in my opinion. And so I think that's something that, you know, we have to look at. The Beamer's people say that you can leave the town of Bennington, full-time employment and retire, and then wait a month and then come back and work 24 hours a week. And, you know, could we possibly do that with some of our people that are retiring? I mean, it's possible. And that's something we'll certainly sit down and talk to this officer about before his exit interview and go from there. But there's a lot of things that we need to look at so that we can, we can keep things flowing smoothly here.
And on your foot patrol, you mentioned Main Street. And one of the things some of the shop owners mentioned to me is shop owners and employees parking full-time on Main Street, cutting down on parking access. And they were wondering if there's some way we could encourage people not to do that, too.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, I saw that. And one of the things that we did unfortunately a while back was we got rid of the parking meters, right? And there are still lots of communities that have parking meters. And I know it's, you know, people are going to be like, "Oh, that chief's a jerk. He brought up parking meters." But, but it was a lot simpler when we had parking meters, quite honestly. And now, you know, we switch to a system where you take the chalk and you go up to someone's car and you chalk their tires. And then, you know, maybe, maybe they just came from one of the car washes on North Side Drive and they just had tire shine or whatever. They don't want their tires chalked. And we got complaints years and years ago before probably, yeah, before all of you were on the select board. And we just stopped chalking tires because people got frustrated with it. And, you know, I think that, you know, I mean, we can't put an officer out there and just sit on Main Street and wait. Has it been two hours since that car moved? I mean, you know? So those are little things to think about. And I don't want to upset Mr. Hurd by saying, "Bring back parking meters." But the bottom line is, is that's really one of the only ways that we're going to, you know, fix that problem. And then we also have shop owners, Clark, that park on Main Street. And they're there for hours and hours and hours. And that's not fair to the people that want to shop down.
Correct. Again, it's first, shop owners and employees.
Right.
The person who spoke to me said that, you know? That was their concern, how we could get a little more turnover in terms of availability of parking. And my final parking thing is the handicap parking spots on Main Street. Is there any way we could get the curbs marked so that it's clear that's a handicap spot? And I noticed, at least in my automobile, when you sit there, you can't really see the handicap parking-only signs when you pull in. They sit too high. I mean, if you're all, unless you're looking up like this, you don't see that. Maybe we can get those markers lowered down to where people sitting in automobiles look out and it's right there saying, "Hey, designated handicap parking only" marking the curbs.
I'm happy. I'll see Mr. Jolly tomorrow morning at staff. Between Stuart and I, we can, we can certainly measure, mention that. I just, I don't know what the requirements are for how high the sign needs to be, but one of us can, can talk to RJ tomorrow and find out a little bit more about that.
If you're in RJ's truck, he'll be right at it. But if you're in most of our cars where, you know, you're in sloping windshield, you kind of have to look up to see that sign.
So I just have, if you don't, if you don't mind, I just have two more quick things. We are getting quite a few requests about events on Main Street. And I know some folks have been a little bit frustrated with some of the events that have been happening on Main Street. People do have the right to assemble as long as they don't impede people flowing, that's vehicles and people flowing on our sidewalks and in our streets. I caution you all, we don't want to have conflicting events on Main Street. And there's some, you know, there's, there are some groups that want to have events on Main Street when other groups are already there. And I think we need to be really careful of that. You know, hypothetically speaking, you know, during the Pride event, we really focus on security and safety there. If we have another group that wants to have about 2,500 people march down Main Street, well, that event's going on. And I just, I'm not a negative guy. I just, I think that for safety reasons, we need to start looking at some of these community events that are going on and how often we're closing Main Street and things like that. Because that also, Clark, is upsetting some of the downtown merchants from what I heard. So please be careful with that. The other thing I want to tell you is, I want to end this on a positive note. For all of you, you know, I'm not a Trumpster. I'm not one of those people that, you know, jumps up and down. I keep my beliefs to myself. Donald Trump recognized a young man by the name of DJ Daniel and made him an honorary member of the Secret Service. And while Lieutenant Brandy and I were down in New Orleans, we had the opportunity to meet 13-year-old DJ Daniel. And it was just mind-blowing to me. He's such a cute little kid. And I had a picture, but I was going to put it up for you. Lieutenant Brandy and I got to, there were over 500 people at this conference. And we were in the hall and little DJ comes up and he says, and I was like, "Me? I'm a nobody here at this conference." And he wanted me to bend over and he wanted to rub my head. And he gave me an A-plus for this wonderful haircut that I have. And so for those of you that don't know, DJ suffers from brain cancer. And they did not give him a very long time to live when he was diagnosed at the age of eight. And he is in a, in a trial and seems to be doing very well. And would love to have a haircut like ours, Clark.
Maybe a long-term.
And he, but he can't. He has to grow his hair because of the scar, scar that he has on top of his head to prevent the sunburn. But I have to tell you, he is such an amazing young man. He is right full of energy. And we had the opportunity, we knew he was going to be there. We never thought in a million years we'd get to shake hands with him and have pictures with him. And we brought him patches from the Bennington Police Department III. And he couldn't have been more happy. And on my next visit here, I'll share that photo with all of you because it didn't end there. He wanted me to come up on the stage with him so he could rub my head again. And, but he's amazing. And I think that we, we have to think about life and how short life is. And we live every day to its fullest. And we have to think positive. And that's what I'm going to share with you before I step away. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right. Next, we have Shannon Barsati joining us regarding the Bennington Revolving Loan Program and Southshire LLC.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Chief. So we have an application for the Bennington Revolving Loan Program. And this application came from Joseph Polito. He is the current owner of Southshire Inn. Southshire LLC is the business name. And his application is to fund interior and exterior painting and repairs at the Southshire Inn, which is a historic home that's been converted to a bed and breakfast. So a brief summary of the applicant's request is the loan amount requested is $35,000. The terms of the loan would be a 10-year term at an interest rate of 3%. Given that this is an important historic building and is right outside of our designated downtown, we suggested a lower interest rate. The scope of work would be exterior paint and repairs, interior, interior painting and new carpet. The collateral on the loan would be a second position on the real estate, which is valued at $800,000. And then the contingencies for the loan would be that all appropriate permits are obtained, insurance that's required by revolving loan policies, and that the loan would be paid off in full if the building is sold. And the applicant meets all of the other requirements pertaining to the loan program. And town staff reviewed the application and supporting documentation and believes that the applicant's request is within the scope of the town's revolving loan program. So I would be asking for a motion to approve this loan request.
Can I just hear, did you, I hear you say a lower interest rate?
I just mean that our typical interest rate is usually half of prime plus one.
Okay.
But when we, a lot of this program is really trying to incentivize development in our downtown center. So that's why we often provide a lower interest rate to properties that are in the downtown.
So I had a follow-up to that. And I was thinking that a 10-year term at the interest rate of 3% just outside of the downtown, is there a lower interest rate that we offer inside the downtown?
It really is up to the select board, but we have had interest rates as low as 1% in the designated downtown.
My concern is that we are setting a precedent. And I don't want to hold up this application, but I just want us to all be aware that if we set a rate at 3% based on location and the other details of the application, is that precedent-setting? And I think it is. And maybe we want to set that precedent, by the way. I just think we need to know what our guidelines are.
All right. Well, at this point, I would hear a motion to accept the application, approve the application as requested.
And I'm going to second that. And then I'll, and then I'll make a follow-up comment. You ready?
Did I make the motion?
I thought you made a motion. Oh, I'll make the motion. I'll second that.
All right. Ed moves and Clark seconds. Thank you.
And my one follow-up comment is, could we file in our brains this 3% so that we have, if we have set a precedent, that we stick to our own precedent, please?
All right. So we have met an executive session, discussed this loan. Shannon did provide additional information to us regarding some questions that we had around that. As it is a loan application, the information is primarily private for very good reason. So with that in mind, I'll close discussion. And all those in favor of approving the loan, please signify by saying aye.
Tom, I, a little more discussion on that. Clarify Ed's concern and my question. The 1% over prime is for the downtown preferred business area, correct?
It's half plus one.
It's just, just a general, you know, because the revolving loan program is open to anywhere within Bennington, not just the downtown. So the, just the general term or the general interest rate is half of the prime interest rate plus one.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I don't know what prime is right now. I think it was, it's around 8%.
But for the downtown, Clark, for the downtown business, we do 1% only, not half of prime plus one, it's 1%.
That's what I was getting all confused about.
Yeah. I mean, it's like, this building is in the designated, you know, if you look at the maps of Bennington's downtown, we have the historic district. And I believe it's in the historic district. Then we have what's called the designated downtown, right? Which is the taxing district. And then we also have the historic review district, which is a little bit bigger than that. So, you know, it's really right, right in that area.
Okay. All right. Mr. Hurd, clarify things for me. That's what was confusing me.
Can I ask you briefly?
I think we need to have a policy in writing regarding town loans so everyone knows the steps the town officials and the select board take that get us to the point where we're voting. The board just started voting on loans a few years ago. They should have been voting all along. I do have a question regarding one of the, one of the steps with this loan. And because of that, I'm just going to abstain tonight. And it's no reflection on the applicant. I'm questioning one of the steps, so.
I think that's fair. And I do think it might be a good idea for us to, on a future agenda, bring the loan program up and possibly review and maybe improve the program. But that being said, I will call the vote. All those in favor of approving this loan, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and Nancy abstains.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thanks.
All right. I believe that brings us to the manager's report.
I have two action items tonight. One involves closing a portion of Franklin Lane between South Street and basically the stop sign that you run into as you get to the rear of the former Drysdale Building. Harvest Brewing is looking to close this portion of Franklin Lane on Friday, May 23rd, between 4:00 PM and 10:00 PM for an event that will support the Francis of Assisi Cat Rescue Organization. They did that last year as well. And so I'm looking for a motion to allow that closure to take place.
And before we do that, with that in mind, I have need to recuse at this point. So I will hand the table to you.
So I'm going to make that motion if I can.
So, I will entertain a motion. And motion is made by Ed. Thank you to close for that on that day in time. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from?
Jackie can take credit.
Okay, Jackie, you can have the second. Thank you, Clark. Is there any discussion of the motion?
Just a question. This happened last year. Were there any business owners that were concerned customers couldn't go down or it wasn't an issue?
The gentleman that operates Harvest Brewing actually goes out and talks with the various building owners and residents that are in the area. So, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. Thank you.
The second is a resolution to reappoint Eric Hatch to the Southern Vermont Communications Union District. If you recall, Eric was one of the primary movers in forming the district when it was first started. He seeks to continue to represent Bennington on this body. And I'm looking for a motion to approve that appointment. There is a resolution that will be signed by the town clerk as part of that appointment process once you folks have approved it.
All right. So, would anyone like to make that motion?
I will.
Okay. Got a second?
Second.
Jackie seconds?
Can I ask a question? This is predates me, the Southern Vermont Communications Union District. What exactly is that?
Like, maybe I can answer a little bit on that. So, these communication union districts were really set up to try to find the best way to funnel resources to support broadband access to underserved parts of the state. And this is the one that was formed to create that for our region.
Okay. I'm not, haven't been to Vermont long enough to understand where I came from. Previous I had a communication union district. It's like reunions all getting together in different districts and organizing. So, that was for me. Thank you.
Anything else? All right then. All those in favor of reappointing Eric Hatch, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We are unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's the last thing. Has to do with the listening sessions that we had hoped to set up for the third Wednesday in June. Unfortunately, the fire department has the room that evening. And the Tuesday and Thursday before and after are also booked. So, I'm looking to you folks for some direction as to when best to try to find a time that doesn't have us meeting twice in a week to do these listening sessions.
Stu, can I ask you, further down the road, could we reserve these, this room, you know, kind of in perpetuity?
If we can, if we can set a time, which I had hoped would be the third Wednesday of each month because that gets us off of a meeting week. Unfortunately, this particular week, it does not work. But we will try to schedule beyond that on that night.
Okay. Because this was a little shorter notice.
Yes, it was.
This is the second month in a row we ran into this. That was our problem for this month. And now we have the next month. And I know one of our discussions was trying to stay on track with this so it doesn't kind of slip people's mind that we're doing that. Is there any possibility we can do it sooner in June than later?
If you wish, I would be glad to see whether the Wednesday of the second or the Wednesday of the fourth week in June would be available. If that's your direction, I'd be glad to do that.
Well, I'm just proposing it here, you know, to get back on track with it. Next thing you know, it'll be July. Who knows what's going to happen in July?
Yeah, because we haven't met since February, correct?
Correct.
I'd like to try a different Wednesday in June.
Okay. So, that would, that would mean we would be voting twice in one week, correct?
You'd be meeting twice in one week.
So, is there anyone on the board that that would be an issue for?
As long as it's not like last January and February. We're meeting three, four times a week.
All right. Stu, I think you have.
I have direction. Thank you. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much.
Another question on the community development part of the report. Can you jump in with a quick one there?
I don't think we've ever had a question on the community.
It's a good thing Shannon's here.
I saw Shannon was here. I just saw a note in the Ben High redevelopment thing about the Northern Border Regional Commission grant. And I also just read that the Northern Border Regional Commission is one of the regional economic development agencies that Doge has scheduled to eliminate. So, I was wondering if there's any concerns with that million-dollar grant.
I haven't heard of any concerns. We haven't noticed a proceed. So, we're further along, you know, than, because we received the grant in the last fiscal year. And it hasn't been spent yet. But it will be as soon as the Ben High, it's a reimbursable grant. So, as soon as the Ben High project is under construction, which is scheduled for very soon, I think the 21st of May is the construction start. So, we'll try to spend that money as soon as we can.
Shannon, on that note, yeah, I know it's not our control, but in some way, we can really, really encourage that because I keep hearing the term clawback out there on these grants. So, you know, if we can get that money out of the pipeline, the better for all concerned.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, you know, but like I said, both of those are for construction because the other, the other one was the congressional direct funding for Becca Ballant. But actually, I think a lot of that money was also used for pre-development. So, that will be, we had to get to the closing, which was scheduled for the 20th. Then construction starts right after that. And then I'll be working really hard to get that money out the door.
We see the documentation that the money is gone. You know, that's what I really would like, we just document that we spent the money and get Zack and his guys on the way to good things.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear.
To get Zack and his guys on the way to good things. We just really work to make sure we document that money is in the pipeline and we're using it. So, we don't deal with that clawback down the road.
Yes, I hear you.
All right. Anything else? All right. Very good. Upcoming agenda. Next week, I have a quick EMS week proclamation. We're looking at the solid waste implementation plan. And now I've added the trail proposal. Farther down the road, I have the community cafe and the energy committee in June. And I'm sure there'll be much more. Stu, am I missing anything here?
June 23rd, you will have the BBC budget and work plan to look at. And we'll probably end up with some work sessions early June, as you folks have asked for, in the evening during weekdays, to review the water and sewer budgets. And assuming that we get through that work, we'd be probably looking to set the rates at one of those meetings, potentially late June, to set the rates for water and sewer.
Okay.
Tom, did you say energy committee is going to be coming in?
Yep. That's correct.
And I'd also like the skateboard park on the agenda. I had some, I had somebody ask me this afternoon about the GoFundMe campaign. And I said, "I didn't know." She showed me her phone. I guess somebody's doing a GoFundMe. It looked like they'd raised over $12,000. So, I'm interested in hearing the details and knowing exactly where we are financially right now.
Okay. I did, I did see that GoFundMe myself. That looked to me like they were maybe looking toward something for the next phase. As far as I know, our obligations to the current project haven't met.
Our commitment hasn't changed from what we're aware of. And Nancy, we can invite, but we can't, we can invite. I want you to know that the energy committee reached out to us. And that's why they're on an agenda. So...
Well, I've wanted them to come in. I have been asking for them to come in.
Have you reached out to them?
Well, no. It should normally up to the chair and the vice chair to set the agenda.
I'm not sure that's true. I'm not sure that's true.
Well, all the meetings I've watched, the chair and vice chair have invited the boards in and the committees.
You know, Ed, I think. It's a little bit of both. If a committee does approach me, as it was in this case, asking for time on the agenda, I would, I would grant it to them. So, if you wanted to approach them and ask them if they wanted, were interested and had something to report, I'd certainly be happy to talk to them.
They're the only board that has a select board liaison that were not invited in last year. I've asked a couple of times over the past several months that we do invite them in.
Okay. Well, they'll be here next month.
Okay.
The skateboard park has a liaison?
I think she was talking about the energy.
I'm sorry. Did I say skateboard park? I'm sorry.
That's the liaison to the energy.
But as far as the skateboard park goes, I have been trying for two years to get a public discussion about the building.
I'd invite them in, Nancy.
Ed, stop cutting me off.
I can look into seeing if they have anything to report to us. But beyond that.
Well, they should have some.
Our current obligations to the skate park.
We'd be glad to give an update on the skate park, whether it's, whether it's written or whether it's verbalized.
Well, I need information about the building. And I've brought up my concerns about the building in the past. And I'll be happy to bring them up again. I don't want to string the people along for phase one. We heard about phase one and phase two on day one when Dan talked about it a couple of years ago. So, we need to get phase two on the agenda to find out exactly what's going on.
Okay. Well, since they have started fundraising, it might be appropriate. But Shannon, could you speak to that a little bit?
I just want to clarify that I believe that that GoFundMe, well, first I'll say the town's funds for the skate park have already been raised. We have raised all of the funds for the phase one. But the select board, I'm sorry, not the select board, the skate park committee, which is a group of local citizens, while Grine Line is here because the skate park builders have just returned, they met with the committee and they wanted to add another feature. So, they are on their own raising that money. It's not a phase two. It's really just an extension of what we've already raised.
From what I understand about phase two, a group of citizens would manage the park. Who would pay to maintain this building every year? Not the town taxpayers. So, we need a lot of clarifications if anybody is really still considering this building.
Okay. So, when the time comes to discuss phase two, we can, we can ask those questions.
Yeah. I think we need to ask them when they're ready to give that presentation.
But this is town land we're talking about, correct?
Yeah, it is our town. It is our land.
So, if somebody wants to put a building on town land that our taxpayers own and pay for, I want to make sure nobody's looking for our taxpayers to have to pay anything for that building going forward.
I 100% agree with you, Nancy, that that question should be asked. But I, what I'm saying is that we're not at the point that we should be asking that question because the discussions around phase two have not yet begun. Once, once they've begun for real, we will have them come in and we'll discuss it.
Well, there were comments made at earlier skateboard park meetings.
That's correct. But then we broke, they broke the project down into two distinct parts. Stage one is nearing completion. And as Shannon just told us, and thank you for the clarification, the contractor suggested some additional work. They're seeing if they can raise the money themselves, which I think is commendable. But when stage two does come up for discussion, that is a very appropriate question. And I would expect you to ask it then.
So, phase two is not a done deal?
No, because we haven't discussed it and we haven't voted on it. Nothing's a done deal until we've had the discussion. There's a difference between a proposal and, I mean, and a concept and a proposal. And we have a concept now, but we don't have a formal proposal.
Well, last year, didn't somebody, did they run a water line from River Street?
Can we bring this back, please? We're 40 minutes late.
Exactly.
Ed?
I'm not going to stop, Nancy. Not going to stop.
I appreciate your.
I'd like us to bring it back. To the items at hand, please.
And I think I've answered as much as I really think I should tonight.
If water was run from River Street to the parking lot, I'd like to know what the water is for.
That's. Tom, on the upcoming agendas.
Yeah. I think we're ready to move on at this point on this discussion. We're not discussing, we're discussing upcoming agenda items. We can invite the skate park if they have anything they want to talk to us about to come in at a later date. But when stage two does come up, that's the appropriate time for those types of discussions.
Tom, I'd like to ask the board to consider adding Colleen Kelly's resolution to an upcoming agenda.
Thank you.
Okay. We can discuss that.
Thank you.
All right. Other business. Nancy?
Yep. This is a copy of our town hazard mitigation plan the BCRC is working on. This is a draft. I believe everybody has until June 2nd if you'd like to comment. Information is on the town website. Jonah has it also and other places. The question I have on here, it says that we were part of a plan in 2005. It was adopted September 25th of 2017. I believe that's when FEMA approved it in 2017. But it says it expired in September of 2022. So, do we have a plan that expired nearly three years ago?
Well, they will be here next week. Unless, Stu, you have something to say on that?
No, I actually don't. That's been a plan that Dan's been working on. So, I don't have the details. And I don't have, I don't recall the history of that.
I was just reading it in the beginning. And it also says North Bennington has their own hazard plan. Would that be just the village or all of North Bennington?
Well, North Bennington is the village.
Everything in North, well, I'm thinking just, everything in North Bennington is North Bennington village?
Yes. The village trustees have their own hazard mitigation plan. Yes.
Well, it says in 2005, we were part of a multi-jurisdiction plan. Do you know if North Bennington would have been part of it then?
I'm guessing that they would have been.
Right. Dan's been doing most of the legwork on this, Stu?
Yes.
There was, back in, back in the day, there was a, you could, you could qualify for having a hazard mitigation plan by being part of this multi-jurisdictional plan. Subsequently, each individual municipality is required to have their own hazard mitigation plan. And North Bennington and Bennington both have one for their entire municipal jurisdictions.
But I just find it strange that North Bennington has their own plan, especially if it's current, if ours expired nearly three years ago, after having, having one starting in 2005?
Let me just caution us about expired plans. We've been down that road before without knowledge.
I can show you, Ed, right on the page if you'd like to read it.
Let's just be careful, please.
Would you like to read it?
We probably, with due respect, we probably should reserve discussion of this until it's an agenda item.
Thank you. That's correct.
Thank you.
Nothing else. Thanks.
All right. Jackie?
I just wanted to express some gratitude to everyone that submitted a letter of interest to join a town board or commission. We had a positive response this year. And I'm looking forward to speaking with all of you.
Clark?
Well, a little dated. I was sitting in my living room on one of those rainy, dreary days we had a few days ago, and the Bennington Monument popped up, boom, on Fox News discussing our 250th anniversary and the things that were happening in the March on Ticonderoga and all the things that our communications director has been so deeply involved in. And I was just happy to see that they're talking about us. That's all.
Thank you. Ed?
I have one issue related to a hazard question. I have had a couple of residents ask me about the hazard that is being caused on Benmont Avenue by the Enterprise sign. So, apparently, you cannot see coming out of Hunt Street to the left because of the placement of the Enterprise sign. And the reason that a couple of people asked me about it was because over the winter, when there were snow piles there, the town removed those snow piles because they caused hazards. So, Stu, I guess I ask you to either point me in a direction or tell us what to do with those kinds of concerns.
You've done all you need to do.
Thank you. I knew that I was in the right place.
All right. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes, sir.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you all very much. We'll see you next week.